So I call this joint session of Milwaukee City Council and the Clackamas Board of County Commissioners to order. As we proceed, there will be opportunities to discuss the topics presented. If elected officials would like to speak, please prop your nameplate up on its side like this, and I will call on you. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment. If you would like to speak, please submit a yellow speaker card to staff. Speaker cards are available on the sign-in table. If you would like to receive updates on the Hillside project, please add your contact information to the signup sheet on the sign-in table. We all kind of know each other, so I don't, I think we'll skip the introductions just so we can smooth things along. So Jill, if you and Stephen would like to take it away?
Took my opening remarks away.
Yeah.
Your staff took half my meeting away.
Well, I want to say something anyway. First thing, in case you don't know me, I was mayor of Milwaukee from 2001 to 2009. When I got elected in 2008, I actually, this issue was on the table. And so while I was still the mayor, I was about to be sworn as a county commissioner. And I just want to say that, you know, it's a pleasure being here with you guys. Love to do this more. And Clackamas County recently completed a housing needs assessment countywide, first time in the state. You guys have done it already, so your information made it a little bit easier. But, you know, we've made mistakes in the past, and Clackamas County is trying to make sure we don't do that again. We're also making sure that, that we never create pockets of poverty again. I think we've done that in the past, but this project is mixed income, and that will make a big difference in the lives of the families around and within the development. That's all I need to say. Thank you for inviting us.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just for public meetings law, to speak consistent, I think the chair of the county commission should open the meeting on behalf of the commissioners, just for, I think that's how the protocol goes for public meeting.
It's not the protocol that I was given, but...
I am totally supportive. We were hosting you, which is why we were opening the meeting, but we're great. Feel free.
If I was good with that, but it says joint, when it says joint, then I think we have to open each.
Well, Clackamas County Commissioners, we'll open the meeting today in joint with the city of Milwaukee on October 8th, 2019.
So I'm Jill Smith. I'm the executive director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, and I also coordinate housing services across the county. And I want to apologize upfront for the miscommunication. I had the meeting time right on my calendar, and so did Stephen's, so I don't know what happened, and I'm really sorry about that. So we're going to expedite this, and I'm just going to touch briefly on what led the county to be interested in proceeding with doing a lot of work, which resulted in an over 500-page housing needs assessment, which will be published and open for public consumptions very soon. There's bits and pieces that have trickled out. What kind of prompted that work was the Board of County Commissioners wanted to pull together an affordable housing and homelessness task force to help them to really understand what the community wanted us to do about the growing need that we see every day with people who are homeless that are on the streets, and, you know, our own kids can't afford a place to live. Rents are rising rapidly. The need is just becoming so much more obvious. And so a group of diverse community members came together for several hours each month to focus on solutions. And in order to really make sound decisions, they felt understanding the need, what was, you know, causing this growing need to occur, and how different the need is across the entire county was really important. So I'm very thankful that we have this information now, because we've got one, maybe two more meetings, and the task force final recommendations will go to our Board of County Commissioners. And we're very excited for that. I was just talking to Wilda about that before this meeting started, and she has served on that task force for over a year and put in a lot of hours, and we really appreciate that. I just want to highlight really quickly a few of the key findings, and I've got the key findings page in your packet of information. I'm not going to touch on every one of them. You'll have lots of opportunity to go as deep as you want. And I think this will really inform a lot of the work that we do over the next decade in housing across the county. Some of the things that really stood out for me is just the fact that Clackamas County is really growing. It's grown by 14% since 2000, and this need is stemming from that growth. 57% of the growth was the result of people moving into the county from another part of Oregon, the US or outside the US. 57%. And the demographics are changing, and that's part of the reason we're having a housing crisis right now. The largest growing demographic are baby boomers, folks that are getting older. They want to stay in their house as long as they can, but then they want to transition to something smaller. Millennials are the second-largest growing demographic. They are just getting to the point where they might be starting to have families and want a little bit larger units, but they have a real strong desire overall to live in more of a city, you know, community, where they can walk, where it's walkable. They're close to things. In Clackamas County, 75% of our housing units are single-family homes. So we've got this changing demographic, this growing community, but we're not changing our housing to keep up with it. And that really is the challenge that's in front of us. Two other big pieces I just wanted to touch on before we move on are the fact that while people's wages are rising in Clackamas County, they're not rising as fast as housing costs are. People are paying more and more of their income towards rent and even their mortgage. So housing affordability is a big concern. While income in the county grew 33% between 2012 and 2016, at the same timeframe, the median home value grew from 3.7x the median income to 4.6x over that same timeframe. So the wages just aren't keeping up with the increase in housing costs. And then finally, we have so many people that are on the actual verge of homelessness because they're paying so much of their income towards their rent utilities. We have extremely high numbers of families that are cost burdened, and most of those people are renters. They're very vulnerable. They're one paycheck, one medical issue, one loss of a job away from not having a place to live. Anytime you're paying over 30% of your income towards rent and utilities, you're very vulnerable. So those are our challenges, and there are several recommendations in the report. You should take the time to look at them when you get a minute. I'm going to turn it over now. What's next? Milwaukee City Staff.
Good evening, councilors and commissioners. I'm Christina Fadenrak, the Housing and Economic Development Associate at the City of Milwaukee. For context, Milwaukee specifically, we declared a housing emergency in 2016. And some similar statistics you'll hear. The Oregon Housing and Community Services found that 27% of all city households in Milwaukee to be severely housing cost burden, spending more than 50% of our income on housing. 32% of those were homeowners, and 51% of those were renters, spending 30% of their incomes on housing. So those were moderately burdened. We have a severe need for an increase in housing supply. In 2018, the city vacancy rate was only 3%, while nationally in 2016, the vacancy rate was 12%. So we're severely constrained here. There are 1,500-plus people in Clackamas County on a waiting list for public housing located in Milwaukee. And in the 2017 Point in Time Survey for Clackamas County, there are over 1,000 houseless people. 400 of those were school-aged children. So the median home sale prices and rent are increasing significantly, leaving Milwaukee families without sufficient funds for necessities such as housing, food, healthcare, transportation, childcare, clothing, and other needs. This burden and crisis limits families from financial stability and equitable outcomes that we want for everyone. So as background, City Council chose housing affordability as their number-one priority, followed by climate action and community engagement that will be used to achieve housing affordability for everyone. The community and their vision adopted in September 2017 also called for housing affordability, and the Milwaukee Housing Affordability Strategy adopted in July 2018 called for affordable housing and an increase of the housing supply. So those goals were to develop new affordable units, prevent displacement, and keep units affordable, and to connect people to existing affordable housing. As an overview, this strategy, this plan, it spans five years, and it began with six months of preliminary work. And in January 2019, the implementation phase began. So some of the work to date that we've done, what we've been working on, is implementing the 1% construction excise tax imposed on residential and commercial property purchases over $100,000. We have a construction excise tax oversight group that are working on developing criteria for how to distribute those funds for affordable housing development. And we hope to have that criteria for council in spring of 2020. We're also working on acquiring a property for development. One of those was a Sparrow property by the Orange Line in the Island Station neighborhood. And it was purchased from Trimat. It's a brownfield site that we want to use for affordable housing. And we received a grant for a cottage cluster feasibility study to explore the city's missing middle housing. We're also maintaining and developing a list of available properties for development. And we have updated our city website full of a comprehensive set of housing resources. So everything from finding a home, building a home, and how to stay in your home. Next steps for the implementation of the M-HOS. We're continuing to market and promote these programs in our Housing Resource Guide for both developers and people looking for a home. And we're working on a couple of grants for the Sparrow property that we purchased and for how to clean up the site. And we're continuing our partnerships with Metro and the county. And we're aligning these goals within the Milwaukee Housing Affordability Strategy with the recently pinned-down Comprehensive Plan housing policies, so they can go with the spring, summer, 2020 code amendments. Just making sure all of those fit together. And that's all I have.
I just have a really quick just update. So the January 2019 Point in Time count is actually, is out, and so we should update those numbers. The homeless population on that count is actually up 9% over 2017, so the problem's actually growing.
Okay.
I think it's also important to point out that the PSU study recently done that was, that came out in August quite clearly demonstrates that those numbers are lower than what's really actually being experienced in our community. Estimates about 5,928 homeless families, or homeless people in Clackamas County. So
Thank you.
Numbers are quite worse than are demonstrated, I think, by the Point in Time, which is a snapshot, unfortunately, not a full picture.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any questions or comments on this section so far? Okay. So the next step is to talk about the county's public housing. Sort of writ large, not just hillside.
Right. Well, we can make it a little more focused to do this quickly. I just wanted to ensure that everyone understands what public housing is. The housing needs assessment that we talked about, talked about housing need at all levels across the county and throughout the cities. And the Housing Authority of Clackamas County really focuses on those most in need. And generally, housing authorities serve people who earn the majority, are 0% to 30% of area median income. You're very, very poor. But we do, across the country, serve people all the way up to 80% of area median income. And we want to do more of that, and we have a huge opportunity to do that with the bond proceeds. And I think the best use of our time would be to talk for a minute about that.
Yeah, I think we can certainly do that. So I'm Stephen McMercher. I'm the Director of Housing Development for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And in your packet, we, to Jill's point, we provided a lot of different information. We encourage you to take a look at, and for many of you, I think what I'm about to talk about next is not new. But when we look at our opportunities through the Metro Housing Bond, what we're talking about is $116.2 million that will be made available to serve, oh, yep. Jill's got an image of it right there if you're looking for it in your packet. $116.2 million will be coming as Clackamas County's portion of the Affordable Housing Bond. Some key numbers to remember in all of that is that under our agreements with Metro and our overall regional goals, 40% of those units, Clackamas County will look to have developed or be actively helping to develop, for those at 0% to 30% of area median income, for those families and individuals that Jill just mentioned that are very low income. In addition to that, a full 50% of the bond proceeds will be allocated to build units that are two-bedroom and larger, recognizing the need for family housing throughout the region, especially here in Clackamas County, throughout all of our communities in Clackamas County and the unincorporated areas. And then lastly, what I wanted to draw your attention to is this, the idea of the missing middle. And I'm glad that Milwaukee talked a little bit about that, because Metro recognized that as a need also. So 10% of our proceeds can be used to serve households as high as 80% of area median income, which is really starting to look at, though a relatively low amount, I mean, that would mean roughly 81 units for us in the county that could be funded with Metro money for that. Still, it's identifying that missing middle. And the other thing that I think we wanted to stress this evening is that this is an exciting time. We are in the middle of a housing crisis. This is not news to anyone at this table. Clackamas County certainly has a desperate need for additional units being on the ground. And as such, Clackamas County and our staff have been working very hard with our local implementation partners and Metro to make sure that we could finalize our county's local implementation strategy, which is what these requirements and goals are made up of, as well as our intergovernmental agreements with Metro, so that we can get resources out, hopefully as early as later this fall, to start getting some units developed here in the county. And we are certainly looking at in communities like Milwaukee, but also throughout the county and in our unincorporated areas. To the point about our public housing portfolio, it is the oldest public housing portfolio in Oregon. Certainly, our Clackamas Heights site in Oregon City, which is why, as the Housing Authority, we elected to set aside as much as 55% of the bond proceeds to serve our public housing portfolio. That is, and those are not units that will be 100% of all of those units or all of that money will be utilized by the Housing Authority. We will work with our nonprofit, for-profit partners to RFP those funds to either get units redeveloped in sites like in Milwaukee, in our public housing in Milwaukee, but also in other areas throughout the county. So it's an exciting time, but it also is a time of action, and we are really trying to prepare ourselves to be ready to move forward as quickly as we can once all of our agreements are in place.
Remind me, what percentage of the Metro bond money has to be used for family-sized units?
At 50%. So, yeah, a little overeager.
Thanks. Anybody else have any other questions on this?
I have one question. So it's 40% for 30% low and lower median income, and 50% has to be used for family-sized housing. I'm going to assume there's some overlap in those two numbers. Is that correct?
Certainly, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, I guess on the 0% to 30%, do we have a plan for the wraparound services that we're going to need to make those folks successful?
Yes, so a part of, what we hope to release, like I said, here later on this fall will be a NOFA. We're still working on the intricacies of that. We're still working with Metro a little bit on the language. But yes, wraparound services are going to be critical. It will be a part of our notice of funding availability, or NOFA that we'll be putting out there, looking for developers that can help match services and also services that might be provided by the county. And that's one of the things that we wanted to also talk a little bit about tonight. So thank you, Mayor Ganda, for that segue, because we did want to talk about the services that the Housing Authority of Clackamas County has been building and is growing and is really committed to moving forward with over the next several years, certainly through the life of the bond and onward.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. So this is really new. This is the first time that we've really had the opportunity to talk about this in this way. But we were very fortunate to have such a supportive board at the county. They committed general funds to housing and housing services. And we actually have all of it contracted out, and we have people in place providing services. And there is a sheet in your folder that actually outlines, you know, what we've been able to purchase. I think it's at the very back, description of services provided at HAC. One of the questions that came to me from Ann and her staff was, "What kind of services do you provide to people that live in the Milwaukee public housing site?" And honestly, a year ago, I would have said one person spread over 545 units. And as you know, these are really high-needs folks that have a lot of challenges. And we've been able to contract out a full-time person that comes to help people, that works for social services, that really works with the highest-need people that are struggling with deep issues, really severe mental health challenges. We have the Mental Health and Addiction Association of Oregon providing one full-time person peer support services. We have our one staff that the Housing Authority pays for through HUD funding, still continuing. And HomeForward, the Housing Authority that serves all of Multnomah County, they have an exceptional, very experienced resident service program that we've been able to, they've never done this before, but I have a few relationships there. And they have given us one full-time person, very reasonable cost, and they're giving us access to their team as well for training, for software, for just learning how to do resident services better for high-needs people. And we're investing this now in our properties so that we can learn how to do this. Because Clackamas County, this isn't an area of expertise that we've had historically. And we're building this and growing this, so that as these bond units are developed, we can use this expertise to provide services that are needed. Because a lot of folks that we're going to have, they won't be successful, which is to roof over their head. So it's important work. And I've had our board question us several times about the existing contracts that are in place with the Affordable Housing and Services Fund that they've committed to H3S. And those contracts are in place for three years. And at the end of that, we hope that there will be new developments that we can, you know, point that money towards to support with resident services. And that's been something that our board, especially Christiana Fisher, has really brought up to us many times, how important that is to her. So we're working on that. That's the one area that we've identified. I think we need more than that.
Thanks. Any else?
Just to be clear, these numbers are countywide? When you say one person, you mean for the whole county in each of these categories?
Well, there's more on the back that I didn't cover, but just for public housing. Just for public housing, yes. So it still isn't the robust group that we could really use, but it's a lot more than we've ever had before. And I must say that in addition to this, part of my new job is to align our existing services that are in the county with the people that we're all serving anyway. So for example, we've got people that are being served by our health clinics, who we have now given a preference for a voucher, and they agree to get that voucher, that they provide ongoing billable services to those folks. And it's really working well. That's something brand-new we're doing as well, so.
Can you clarify just definitions about when you say public housing? You mean housing that the county owns, or does that also include, like, Section 8 voucher housing? Does that also include what, like, or if it's housing alternatives or other groups own? What, can you kind of clarify your terms?
Absolutely. Public housing is owned by the Housing Authority of Clackamas County with a lot of restrictions placed on it by HUD. There's 545 units that we own and operate. There's no one that owns. Yes, county-wide.
Okay.
The majority of them are in Oregon City and Milwaukee. Milwaukee has 200. There's also 145 homes and duplexes scattered all over the county that are public housing that a lot of people aren't aware of. They're just nestled in neighborhoods all the way from Sandy to Candy. So, and that, those are public housing units that we're responsible for.
So those are owned by the county, not just Section 8?
No, they're public housing. So a voucher, that program's called the Housing Choice Voucher Program. It hasn't been Section 8 for a long time, because there's a lot of negative stereotypes associated with that. So it's a big deal to me, because I'm a Housing Authority person. It's all about giving people the choice. So that's attached to a person, and they can take that with them. We have about 2,000 of those on top of public housing, totally separate program. Some of those tenant-based vouchers were committed, 200, were committed to the Affordable Housing Metro Bonds. So they will no longer be tenant-based. They will be attached to units that are developed, enabling us to serve the most extremely low-income people. Otherwise, we couldn't help them. They couldn't afford the rents, the affordable rents. Does that help? Are there other questions about the bond, or?
Well, probably after we hear the part on Hillside, there might be questions specifically about the bond regarding Hillside.
I also just wanted to add that we have, Councilor Christine Lewis is here in the audience, and she's like, "Don't look at me." But if we have questions for Metro at a later time, we may be able to pull in.
So moving on to Hillside Manor rehabilitation and timeline. So apologies for the size of the font, but in your packet as well is a visual aid when we're talking about Hillside Park and Hillside Manor in Milwaukee and that development pipeline. And just for clarification purposes, Hillside Manor is our nine-story tower that is, has received a financing award from Oregon Housing and Community Services, has its general contractor, its architects, is moving forward towards a construction closing where all of our financing will come together, and we'll do an exhaustive rehab starting in second quarter of 2020. That property is moving forward. We'll have temporary relocation of all of the residents that are there. They will be temporarily relocated through our consultants in conjunction with HUD and our general contractors. All of us have been doing this for a very long time. And then brought back to a fully renovated building in cycle. So we are thrilled to have that financing. We're thrilled to be moving forward with that project.
Can you clarify? So they're all going out at once? You're not doing sort of floor-by-floor?
Yeah, they will go in, they will go in stages.
Okay.
Off for a period of time. We're working with our consultant right now exactly how that sequencing will work. But because it's such an exhaustive rehab, that's a great question. Because it's such an exhaustive rehab, and we're doing things like dramatic seismic improvements, heating, ventilation, circulation, new plumbing, new electrical, new elevators, all of that, we will move people out in vertical stacks, which is a little unique. But we've been working with the residents on that, and they're getting excited. That's coming up, second quarter. And then also, if you refer to the visual aid here, again, apologies for the size of it. But when you look at Hillside Park, that is sort of the remaining side of the property, and that will be near at the point where we are completing our master plan right now. And that is the conceptual program that we have put forth with all of the community stakeholder meetings and all the community feedback that we've been working on for about a year, and that just recently, our Board of County Commissioners agreed with and accepted that to allow us to be able to move this forward eventually with the city through forward eventually with the city, through the City of Milwaukee's land use process, where there will be a whole 'nother round of public engagement and opportunities to weigh in on the future of that neighborhood. But we are very excited with all of the hard work that we've done and where we've arrived today. And as you can see from this development pipeline, we are really looking at redevelopment of the site that would take from now point in time over the next 10 years. The life of the Metro Affordable Housing Bonds is seven years, but we know that that's when bonds that might come into this site will be committed. We know that there will still be construction and redevelopment. They go as long as 10 years, as we try and get a variety of different housing types, income levels, first-time homebuyer opportunities, a lot of ambitious goals in that site. Did you have any questions about that?
About the timeline, or?
Timeline, or?
It's too slow.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. So, is there an opportunity for homeownership at the site? I know there is, so I thought I'd ask you anyway. Of course, the land will always remain ours, but there's an opportunity to build up equity and take that equity to another project. What I like about the Metro Housing Bond is that we have needs all over the county, and this might free up some of those dollars that can be spent outside of the metro region. And I think that's really important. Workforce housing, government camp, and all over the county is really a missing part of the housing, particularly in government camp. You know, those folks, a lot of them have to live in the woods, they sleep in their car, or in a tent in the woods, and that's just not appropriate. Some places can't hire people because they have no place to live. And so, for us, the county, our goal is to, you know, provide opportunities outside the metro region that this money might free up. But, and I also understand, you know, I recently had an opportunity to participate in our development in Milwaukee, the Design and Landmark Commission, the Planning Commission, both ends of those, and City Council in the end. And public outreach was tremendous, and I think we've done a much better job this time around than we did back then. But back then, Section 8 was a word, a bad word. The North Main Project, which has some, what's it called now?
Axle 3.
No, it's called North Main.
Yeah, the North Main Project had some Section 8 housing, and we really struggled to get people to accept that. And I think if you go down there now, you'll find it's a great project. New library next door, open evening.
Probably January.
January 11.
January. I look forward to that.
As of today, I can say a date.
What'd you say, the 11?
January 11.
Yeah. I look forward to that. But anyway, I look forward to working with the community through this process. I don't usually go to Planning Commission meetings, but I'd be happy to attend and speak on behalf of this project in the future. Anyway, that's all of it.
Ken? Yeah, I'm sure I understand something on this recent handout. You have, under the aspirational section, onsite blackwater treatment system. That's sewage. Do you mean blackwater, or do you mean gray water? Gray water is sinkwater and shower water.
Right. So, this got handed out. It was supposed to already be on your table before we got here, but this is going to be relevant in a little bit later in the conversation. This was simply the work that came out of a charrette of the county, the city, the staff at Hillside did a charrette around what are the things we should be thinking about from the standpoint of sustainability as we're thinking about developing essentially a holding name. And that is one of the things that was suggested. There is frankly opportunity there on that, but that is like...
So, you do mean blackwater?
You do mean blackwater, yes.
Okay. I was a little surprised.
Maybe before we get into the details, I could talk a little bit about the city process that we need to go through for adoption. I'm Denny Egner. I'm the Planning Director. And for the county to accept the master plan, that's really just a policy decision. It's setting out your approach and program for how you're going to build that. For the city to adopt that master plan, it's a land use decision, which is a much different set of rules under which we need to follow. So, we're at a point right now where we're sort of transitioning between this long-range process where we, as a city, had some opportunity to contribute to development of the master plan, to this development review process with, when the county does submit its application, then we're, we've got a whole new set of rules to follow for that. And we will have quite a few hearings related to that. And I'm just going to describe that process partly for your benefit, partly for the audience's benefit. As we see it right now, based on the master plan as it's been prepared, there are probably three major land use decisions involved here. The first one is a comprehensive plan amendment and zone change that will basically address the number of units on the site, the mix of uses on the site. That requires both a hearing at the Planning Commission and then another hearing at the City Council level to have that approved. It's also going to require some fairly intense transportation analysis to assess impacts on the transportation system. The second major decision is a plan development application and decision. That's the mechanism under which the city sort of fixes that master plan and sets up the master plan so that development can occur. It's going to address the lot layout, the street pattern, the open space pattern, and the, and also talk about the timing of development. The final set of applications is the actual subdivision of the land so that you can build on it. So, it's a little bit different than the plan development. Plan development's setting up the structure under which phasing can occur, and then that phasing will occur subdivision by subdivision. Now, that can all happen under one process, one set of hearings and one application, or it can be broken up into a couple different applications. And I think the county staff's working with us to try to figure out what the best way to handle that is. So, that's, there are hearings that are required for that plan development process, both at the Planning Commission and at the council. And then at the subdivision level, it's just hearings at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's the final decision-making authority there. And I want to point out for the audience, this is a little bit different than the process we're going through right now for the Monroe Street Apartments. There, the use was a permitted use on the property. All they needed to come forward with was a development application. Here, it's a more complicated application process. So, the final thing I wanted to note was that the, you know, there's no city decisions that have been made at this point on this project, and that we're waiting at this point for submittal of the application so we can initiate this overall process. And that's the time that comments directed to the city are appropriate. Right now, we added an item to the agenda tonight to allow public comment to occur, but I just want to point out to the audience in particular that that's not, those aren't comments that are going into the land use record. They're just general comments that might be made at this point. They're not, they're not something that feed into our decision-making process. So, that comes at the time the application's filed, at the time the hearings are held by the Planning Commission and the council. And that's, I can answer any questions about the process if you've got them.
So, to be clear, there is no application being presented at this point in time, but with the city having a goal of community engagement, and I heard you Stevens talk about more community meetings in the future instead of do we plan, or will there be opportunities either before an application is submitted or during that first part of that application process, to engage the community at large in more robust discussions? I'm sure that will, for the city, they can then have, they can submit something that will go to the land use, you know, planning, but more robust discussions with the community? Is that something that you guys have thought about, talked about?
Yeah. So, from our master plan standpoint, so the answer is yes. From our master plan standpoint, we have one more broad-sweeping community meeting, sort of a celebration of the plan and where we've arrived at, echoing again, Leila's here somewhere, her idea, which was, you know, we're at the end, so let's sort of go back to the beginning and talk about how we got here. So, that is our plan, that in the next month, we'll be celebrating with the residents of Hillside Park, inviting the neighborhood, inviting Milwaukee's staff and council, as well as our own commissioners, to come and have that opportunity to discuss the plan, where we're at today, and what those next steps look like. Certainly that throughout the process, we, you know, from, as an applicant, if I put on sort of my applicant hat as an applicant, from an applicant's standpoint, we've got to follow the requirements of the land use process. But as feedback is made available to us through those various steps in the process, you know, we're here to build a vision for a new neighborhood and to be collaborative and be an integral part of the neighborhood for forever. And so, we want to be, we want to be listening to our community members as we have all the way along, and trying to have those discussions about, you know, sheets like this, or what are our overall goals, what are our concerns as our neighborhood grows here in Milwaukee. So, yes, there will be opportunities to reengage with the public.
As you work forward on the Hillside plan, I believe I heard you say you're looking at mixed income in that? That's an integral part?
Yeah, we've always...
Is that correct?
Yeah, sorry, excuse me. Yeah, and that is a value not only of our Board of County Commissioners, but I think also of staff, and just a great way to design neighborhoods going forward, to create opportunities. And that's what we're here to do, is to create opportunities. Certainly, that is when you talk about mixed income, a variety of different incomes, opportunities for perhaps first-time homebuyer, for those to be at what we call more traditionally market-level apartments, as well as those that serve the affordable housing portion. And in a particular interest to us, the Housing Authority, is making sure that we're continuing to serve our residents in the place where they have historically been, those that are perhaps most vulnerable. So, we see a vibrant neighborhood when all of those incomes and opportunities are present.
And there will be wraparound services, so those strategies will help incorporate the people who live in that neighborhood to be part of the greater neighborhood? Is that part of the solution? Help me out with that.
Yeah, so services that are not only provided by the Housing Authority, but also the partners that we'll work with. That, and oftentimes, it was mentioned earlier, Northwest Housing Alternatives, you know, they have a robust resident services program, some of the best. I'm a little biased, but, you know. And so, working with those types of partners to be problem-solving and providing the correct services that are needed for the units we're building.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions before we launch in the conversation? Not that you guys have to run away and ask your questions, I guess, as we go. Before we start the conversation, I kind of want to set the tone a little bit by reminding everyone that Milwaukee sets a vision. We put a lot of effort, a lot of outreach into creating a vision for 2020, or 2040. And there's, the first paragraph in that vision is particularly relevant to this gathering. "In 2040, Milwaukee is a flourishing city that is entirely equitable, delightfully livable, and completely sustainable. It is a safe and welcoming community whose residents enjoy secure and meaningful work, a comprehensive educational system, and affordable housing. A complete network of sidewalks, bike lanes, and paths along with well-maintained streets and robust transit systems connect our neighborhood centers. Art and creativity are worn into, are woven into the fabric of the city." And it goes on from there, but mostly it's about other things. I just wanted to remind us all that, you know, in planning this neighborhood and thinking about creating a place for more of our neighbors to be able to afford to live in our city, and thinking about the fact that we are entering a sort of new period in time on a purely human level, where we have to think about things other than the things we've always thought about, sustainability being one of those. And that's why I had staff print this out. I have questions about that, but I want to go ahead and open up the conversation. See if folks have other things they want to start with. All right. Well, so, let me ask you this.
Stepping back a bit.
Kathy has her.
Oh, sorry.
You looked away just as I turned it.
Okay.
I just figured I would jump in with, sort of following up on Will's question line. Community is important in Milwaukee in a way that I think is perhaps extraordinary in the region. And we're talking about developing effectively a new neighborhood within a setting that already contains neighborhoods. I know you've done large-scale development in other parts of the county, and I'm wondering what lessons learned you have or strategies you intend to apply to do as much as is possible to, at every step of this process, really make sure that we're integrating, reaching out, and incorporating so that it's not a new neighborhood just in the middle of everything else, but is something that we have every opportunity created for the existing residents to embrace what's going on.
So, it's a great question, and obviously, it is at the forefront of everything that we're trying to do. I mean, the Housing Authority of Clackamas County has been serving that particular site for closer to a decade than not, or, excuse me, closer to, you know, 50, 60 years than not now. And those residents on a day-to-day interaction, it has been a resident-first approach. And in that, we want to make sure that all along the process, we are communicating not only with our residents, but the neighborhood that is surrounded, the neighborhood that is supported it. And that's our project partners that are across the street in Providence, Milwaukee, that's the City of Milwaukee, that's the neighborhood associations that are associated with it. We can, we could do a better job. And one of the things that I, you know, when I look at this and I look at the vision, and this is just Stephen McMurtry talking about, when I look at this and I look at the vision of the new neighborhood that will be, the opportunity for that resident engagement, for that neighborhood engagement, for that frankly, city engagement, is what we hope to have here is a development that works methodically through looking at lots on a one-lot-by-lot basis to say, what's the right, what's the right mix here? What's the right size here? What's the right opportunity here? Similarly, when we talk about the services and amenities that we bring to the site, what might, you know, a low-scale neighborhood commercial look like? What might a community building look like? What might a community center look like? In each one of those steps, we anticipate re-engaging with the neighborhood. At the same time, at the same time, you know, if I put my developer hat on, at the same time, we're in the middle of a housing crisis, okay? And we will make as informed as we can decisions, but we also want to invest the precious resources that we have that have a clock ticking on them. So, we will actively ask the City of Milwaukee, I am actively asking the City of Milwaukee and staff to work with us to arrive at that goal. People, I grew up in the City of Milwaukee, and it means as much to me as just about anybody. I lived right up on that hill. And so, I want to see this thrive and succeed, and I want to be a part of community building. So, that, we will continue to engage.
Holly, I think you're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the crisis a moment and about the opportunity we have with regards to the housing... and about the opportunity we have with regards to the housing bond and for the whole metro region. And that is that we have heard from a number of developers, particularly the developers that develop affordable housing units. Wilda has been part of our housing committee. We've heard from that we understand the cost, the hard cost to build today, and the soft cost related to building today, and the cost of time. And so I think we're going to learn a lot around the region about how we develop in jurisdictions and how the jurisdictions have responded to that. And I think really the test for all of us as a region, and probably all the elected leaders is, can we build housing that is truly affordable in an environment which we have massive accelerating cost? Which really has driven the, has driven the crisis. Not that the development itself is bad, but it's been the land use. It's been the price of land. A number of things that have contributed has been a situation where people who own rental properties on the private side have chosen to, if they've had a property, a rental property on the market for twenty years, they've chosen to, you know, adjust their rent supportingly. And that's been at the detriment of a lot of folks who couldn't afford it. So as a result of that, we're more people on the street than ever before. So it'll be a real test for all of us, how we process these things and how much that time costs. So I think there'll be a magnifying glass on each and every one of us on how we do with this. And I think that's something that we need to be mindful of. Thank you.
Well, I, you know, I, the best example of a project well done, I think, is Northwest Housing Project in the historic Milwaukee Neighborhood Association. The way Welch, right?
Walsh.
Walsh Construction, by the way, who is the contractor on the manor? How they communicated with the community through the process, I've heard nothing but great things about them. And, and that's our goal, you know? When an issue arises, we're, we're there to fix it. We're there to communicate with the community, make sure the project is done smoothly and affordably. I think, you know, the last project, well, the one project we're involved in right now, which is the Pedcor Project, is over three hundred thousand dollars a unit. And we can't build this project like that now. Northwest Housing was a hundred and eighty thousand a unit. And it was all due to the design, a lot of design work that occurred. That's where we, our goal is to, that's my goal, is to get there. But I think that, that the, how they worked with the community made that project what it is, a great project. So, I mean, that's our goal, is to get there. And that happens after we get approval. The other thing is the longer we wait, the more costly it gets. So, you know, moving this through the process is really important for Milwaukee. It's also important for the county that we spend those dollars the best way we can. And, you know, Hillside was selected because of its transit access, also social services or medical services across the street. There's just a million reasons why this is the perfect place. And we don't get any money from the federal government anymore to maintain these houses. And so they're just decaying, falling apart. And that's not fair to the residents who currently live there either.
Just before I let Lisa go, we, so because of this issue with scheduling, we had promised that there would be an opportunity for the public to speak. You have to leave at six fifteen, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
And the rest of the commission has to be gone by six thirty, is that correct? We're just trying to figure out when to put in the public testimony so that you guys, because again, they're not really testifying to us because we don't have a process yet. But it is an opportunity for them to reach out to the county commission. So that was part of the thinking here. So I'm going to let Lisa go, and then I'm going to ask, let's do the public testimony portion, and then we can continue the conversation. I'm sorry, it's going to be jumbled, but I want everybody to be able to hear as much of it as possible. So go ahead.
So mine is quick. I just had a clarifying question for the county staff. So you said you have five hundred and forty-five units of public housing, and two hundred are in Milwaukee, so that means there's three hundred and forty-five left, and those are in Oregon City in one site?
No, there's two hundred in Oregon City on two sites, and another hundred and forty-five scattered all over. Some of those scattered sites are in Milwaukee, they're all over.
Oh, I thought the scattered houses was on top of the five forty-five. It's part of the five forty-five. Ah, okay, okay. And you, but you recently rebuilt a site in Oregon City, is that correct?
Rebuilt a site?
No.
Redeveloped, no?
No.
Okay, I thought, I thought Chuck Robbins told us a year.
We're working on it.
Clayton Moore comments, twenty, it's twenty-four units of veteran housing is under construction.
Yeah, no, I thought one of the others, older sites was under.
Yeah, we were working on it. We've kind of shifted to this site right now.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to do public testimony so that we can make sure that all the commissioners can hear testimony. So far, I have two, it's because it's not plugged in. Oh, well, that would be mine. We'll just time it with our.
iPhone.
Anyway, Matt, why don't you come on up?
Ms. Over, you have it?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Three minutes, sir.
So we're going to do three minutes.
Hey, commissioners, councillors, thank you for giving me a minute. My name is Matt Brinker. I am the Chair of the Ardenwald-Johnson Creek Neighborhood District Association.
Could you just speak up a little bit? I'm.
Is this better?
Just, just a little louder.
All righty.
Where are you from?
I'm with the Ardenwald-Johnson Creek Neighborhood District Association.
Right, thank you.
So there's been a lot of great work done in planning Hillside. It's pretty exciting, it's been a long time coming. We had kind of a false start on this about, I'm guessing about a decade ago.
Two thousand eight, no.
Yeah, that fell apart for a number of reasons. Anyways, when this first kicked off, I appreciated that the representatives from the county came to the Ardenwald NDA meeting, and they laid out their goals for what was going to take place. And by and large, those, I think, have been adhered to pretty well. There is one point in particular I'm going to raise again. The Milwaukee City Councilors have heard this before. The mandate from the county is that if for each one unit that is removed, it will be replaced with four. And that was our clear understanding after having met with the representatives. So it was understood that Hillside Park, when all the redevelopment was done, would have four hundred units. That, at some point, the goalposts got moved, and now that has become a one to five. So we're now looking at five hundred to the mid-five hundred units. It's actually in your packet, if you look at it, the stated goal is for every one unit that's removed, will be replaced with four. Anyway, so I'm just saying that out of the gate, that's the expectation was laid, and those goalposts have been moved. One reason I think that's important, especially from our neighborhood's perspective, is we're looking at a lot of density increase in Ardenwald, and it's all in a pretty confined area. And so to have various impacts, we're looking at, you know, five hundred-ish coming into Hillside Park. We're looking at two hundred and thirty-four, just a number of blocks down the road, at the Mifflin site. And eventually, who knows what's coming to Murphy's site, but it's going to be another, most likely a higher density situation. That's a lot of additional individuals, a lot of additional traffic, right in a very, very localized area. So that raises some concerns about, you know, does it, is it going to break that system? Also, this is a regional issue. And I would really like to see every community given an opportunity to step up and become part of the solution. So minimizing the large developments and, you know, try to spread things, spread things around. I think that's probably a better paradigm. Now, this is not associated with the Hillside plan per se. This falls more in line with Milwaukee City Council or, I guess, planning, I'm working on my words, opening Twenty-Ninth Street, I guess, is what I'm trying to get to. Right now, Twenty-Ninth is designated as a pedestrian and bicycle pathway. And if you actually go out there and you walk up and down that street, you'll notice the vast majority of the traffic that is on that road is going to be people walking their dogs, people on bikes, cars are in the minority. So we have some concerns about opening Twenty-Ninth up into the Hillside Park, Hillside Manor complex, when the stated goal is to make that as bike and user, or bike and pedestrian friendly as possible. So those are really the only two points. But I'm, overall, I'm, I'm pretty excited, enthusiastic about what's happening. Like I said, it's a long time overdue, been a long time coming, but have a couple of concerns. I would encourage you to read the letter in the comment packet that is included from the Ardenwald-Johnson Creek Land Use Chair. So get a chance, please read that.
That's three minutes, thanks.
All right.
Well, I, I just wanted to tell you that we are looking to a countywide, we're hoping the county, everyone, every community that should have adhered to GO-10, which is affordable housing, take their share of housing. For example, Happy Valley, when they wanted to expand their urban renewal district, they required our permission. We said yes, but you have to put seven percent of that urban renewal district aside for affordable housing. So while Happy Valley probably never had, they don't have an affordable house in Happy Valley, this will provide that opportunity. We're also doing that all over the county. There are communities that do want that investment. But, you know, a lot of those are outside the metro region. But like I said before, that will provide us an opportunity. And I'd be happy to come to your, the Neighborhood Association with some staff and address any, any issue you like.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ken Craska?
Hi. Thank you, everyone. It's nice to be here. I'm relatively new to the community. Well, I've actually been here since twenty, oh, about four years. Anyway, thank you for having these meetings, this is great.
Ken, I'm sorry, could you repeat your last name?
Yeah, Ken Craska.
Craska.
Milwaukee. So I just had a few questions for you guys. So I live nearby, I actually live right behind the hospital. So I'm curious about the, the project. I think it's really a good idea. We've got a real problem with housing. All you have to do is, especially drive around in Portland, and you can see it. But even now in Milwaukee, you can see people laying on the streets and on the sidewalks. That's not good. But I did have some specific questions. I wanted to know, I, from what I understand, with real estate and land use, which is limited, I wanted to know if there's a proposed, and I would like to emphasize that I feel that there should be a minimum and maximum dense dwelling unit per acre, a density limit on, on this development. And that should be defined. The other question I had is, what percentage of the Hillside Park units are going to be between zero and thirty percent AMI? And what percent of the Hillside Park units are going to be owner occupied versus rentals? Well, are you with me so far? Okay. And then is Hillside Park considered public housing in the way that Jill outlined earlier? And in, in either case, what are the current, we already heard about the current limited wraparound staff to resident ratios at the current Hillside with one hundred units. What is the projected staff to resident ratio for wraparound services with the proposed five to six hundred units? And my last question was, and I just haven't had time to check this, but I think it is. Danny would probably know, is this project in the urban renewal district? Okay. And so since there's taxes frozen in all properties in that district for twenty-nine years, then the tax base, that'll save the county money, right? They won't have to pay.
They don't pay taxes.
Oh, okay, government doesn't pay taxes, all right, so it doesn't matter. But in terms of the increase in use of public services and infrastructure, my understanding is that anyone living in that urban renewal district, even if property values go up or whatnot, it's not going to raise the overall property tax base. So therefore, the services will either have to decline, or those of us who are paying property taxes will have to pay more property taxes to support that. And while I support that in, in spirit, I'd like to know a little bit more in detail what that would impact me as a, actually, the kind of person that one medical bill away from not being able to stay in my house, we're, we're paying more than, our expenses are more than thirty percent, my wife and I, of our gross annual income. So that's my, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think what we'll probably do, because of lack of time, is, and we may not have some of these answers to hand, we'll address these questions perhaps at our next council meeting.
So most of the questions right now are directed to the county because we do not have an application at, at the city. So we'll compile them and we'll make sure that we work with Jill to come up with a plan of action. But people will hear back from either the county or the city with responses, and we'll get those responses to the elected officials as well so that you also see what the responses were from staff.
Thanks. And Renal Cover.
Hi, I live in the Ardenwald neighborhood on Southeast Twenty-Ninth, just up the street from Hillside. And I had written up some more comments about keeping Twenty-Ninth close to vehicular traffic, but I'm going to save those for a later date since Matt brought them up already. The other thing I wanted to bring up that, that a lot of the city people have heard before, but that I really wanted to bring up here, is with all due respect, public outreach has not been good on this project. I'd say ninety-nine percent of the neighborhood that's just adjacent to Hillside had no idea what was going on. When I found out, I went out, started talking to neighbors. The people right up against the fence on Twenty-Ninth had no idea what was going on. And nobody thought this was acceptable. I put out a hundred and twenty-five flyers within thirty-six hours, planning commission meeting two months ago, fifty people showed up, even people who didn't get a flyer till seven PM the night before. Most of them are for affordable housing. We know our neighbors that come through already. I wave at people, I feed them, you know, grapes, when, you know, want a grape? When I'm picking grapes out front, really friendly, so none of us are against it. But the community does not feel like it has been included in this process. And I would beg you to change that, starting now. This meeting tonight, forgive me, is a great example. Emails came out at eight o'clock yesterday morning about this meeting to the list that the city has. And at that planning commission meeting, Kim Travis promised and reassured everybody in that room who signed up on the list that they would get notice so they could participate over Hillside. We got notices at eight something yesterday morning, and I hate to say it, I suspect it's because I posted about it online, like, why has anybody heard anything about this meeting that I'm hearing is going on? So please, something has got to change. Most of the community is all for it. We have a community of amazing, talented people with various expertises that would be helpful rather than a hindrance to all of your jobs. Everybody in the community I've spoken to really wants to be involved in a supportive way and does not want to be left out. So thank you.
All right, those are all the comment cards I have. Does anybody else that wanted to comment before we continue the discussion? Because I know that we're going to lose at least, oh, we lost them.
Ken?
It's gone.
All right, thanks, Ian. So we can continue with the conversation. One of the things that I sort of wanted to ask, generally speaking, you saw our three goals that we're working with right now with affordable housing, climate, and outreach. Beyond the obvious housing goal that this kind of a project represents, what other goals are you guys thinking about as you're doing a project like this? And this can be a question for staff or the commissioner, whoever.
Well, you know, I, I would say energy efficiency, solar if possible. Well, you know, I, I would say energy efficiency, solar if possible, treatment of the water on site, green space, preservation of trees where possible, walkability. Another one that somebody brought up the other day is perhaps dark sky lighting, which I hadn't thought of, but Wilsonville has that requirement. Stuff like that, and you know, we're open to other ideas.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, and I think hopefully it's been evidenced by the county through our health impact assessment, through the outreach meetings that we have had, the, the community engagement meetings, the stakeholders, the very thoughtful process that our architects and designers have brought forth thus far, that we did identify, just like your sheet has shown, Mayor Gamba, that, that there are baseline goals that we will try and reach in this development, and there are those sort of goals that we really think we can get to, to challenge ourselves to get to, when it comes to things like energy efficiency, when it comes to things like water reclamation, when it comes to, to benefits really for our residents to help lower their overall utility bills. I mean, that's a huge focus of, of ours up here. And then there are the more aspirational goals. And I, I want to go back to what I said earlier, because I think there's a golden opportunity for us to, to look at these and to, as we redevelop this property, it will not all be happening at once, as our timeline has shown. So we have a chance to, and I think Commissioner Savas brought this up earlier, this will be a learning exercise in the beginning. We will have the opportunity to look at the first development in real time and say, okay, we've done this, now what can we do next? We're also going to be weighing that against the available financial resources that are there, the other service resources that are there, to really create this, this new vision, this new neighborhood. I don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but we know that as we develop out, we'll be using the, the backbone of the health impact assessment as sort of a guiding principle as we're moving forward with what our development expectations will be of those who will come in and develop in, you know, throughout Hillside Park.
So I have a question. What kind of community outreach are we doing? I mean, why would the people in the backyard not know? I mean, it just seems hard to believe.
That is a great, is a great question. I was disappointed to learn about when the email went out on this particular, it was posted. You, you guys, through your process and your consultants have had, I want to say four? Is anybody remembering how many town, kind of town hall?
At least four, maybe more.
By the time we could have this last one, we will have done a total of six.
Six, okay.
So, and, and, yes, I think that, that more communication has been, what I've taken away from all of this is that more and regular communication, what we thought was probably the best laid plans we could build upon and have even a more robust, especially where the neighborhood, neighborhoods surrounding us are, are concerned that we could be working with the City of Milwaukee and staff to get more regular updates to the property out there. But we did try and stagger those community engagement meetings, so that we did some in the evening time, some that were more easily accessible from our residents or in the afternoon. We tried to stagger that in a way that we could cast as wide a net as possible, to really make sure, most importantly, and, and in our estimation, that we were also getting resident feedback, because this is their home.
Right, and, and on top of that, I know that my staff has met with the NDA at least once on this, if not twice. So, you know, there's stuff happening, but as with anything, you know, folks are busy, they have a lot of stuff going on, and it's, it's easy to miss the notice in the pilot or the notice in the, you know, however else we're getting the word out. So, it's obviously something.
Well, I have an idea.
Absolutely.
Why not put a sign up at the site that announces the meetings a week or a month before? Now mostly it's going to be turned over to the city, but I, I don't remember if the city used to do that. Put a sign in the ground that says hearing, public hearing.
Well, we haven't had horrible orange ones.
It's a postcard.
Well, that's for land use hearings. We haven't had any.
We haven't had a land use hearing, so we haven't had any.
Oh, okay.
There have been.
So, this is a land use hearing, so.
It won't, it won't be until, once you guys have, have made your application, then we will have a series of land use.
Well, I, I would recommend that we do something like that, a yellow poster that says, "Meeting is such and such."
I think they've been orange to date, but yes. I think we can absolutely work with that applicant once you come in to talk about how we make sure that the signs are posted and what that looks like. You are the owner of the property, which also gives us an opportunity that's unique to over-sign and to maybe put up some more notifications, just to make sure the public's really aware.
And I think, you know, we, we, there is a sign out, one of the things I, maybe I said it or didn't, there is a sign-up sheet, make sure that you are signed up. We will make sure that the email for the next big meeting on this that the county's having comes out more than one day in advance.
Twenty-four days. Actually, I think it's thirty-six.
Well, we'll aim for a week. Do we aim for a week?
I think eight, weeks are great.
Okay. We will make sure that the email goes out to that list at least a week before their next meeting.
May I put a plug out for that? If you're in the audience tonight and you would like to receive that email notice, would you please make sure you sign in? There's a sign-in sheet. So not the yellow cards, but actually sign in on that form, and we'll make sure we add you to the list we sent you.
All right. Oh, sorry.
It's okay, I'm used to it. Not from you in particular. It's just a story in my mind. So one of the things I've been thinking about, because most of these communities, people are going to need transit. People are going to need a way to get from A to B. You know, obviously, light rail is, is getting people off the road. We hope that. But how assured are we that as we build transit, move transit, that the transit that's actually available to people is energy efficient? This may be more of a TriMet question. I have no idea, and I, maybe it's my ignorance speaking, but, you know, are they using gas-powered cars? Are they cutting down on emissions? Are they, because it's not enough for us to stop driving cars. It also has to be what we're providing is actually cutting down on greenhouse gases. So is anybody?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. TriMet is on a glide path to having sixty electric buses system-wide by, I want to say it's two years, three years, do you remember? And then their intention is to continue rolling those out. They mostly are diesel right now. Some of them use a percentage biodiesel. It's actually a question I had as part of the process. Are you guys thinking about things like shared cars, microtransit? Because there is a bus of stops there that, I believe the route takes you down to the light rail station. It also goes north. But that's one destination, right? That there were two, I guess. I'm curious if you guys have thought about shared cars, microtransit, even shared bikes that would be available to folks, so they could get over to the grocery store easily, or.
Is there a grocery store?
There's Safeway. I'm working on the other one.
And Safeway is nearby, not far from Hillside.
Certainly look at, you know, some provider that might provide stuff like that.
So, yes, we are looking at all of those options, especially when we talk about the infrastructure and the future infrastructure needs. So we've been working from the get-go with Portland General Electric and have started a relationship, though in full disclosure, it's been a little hidden mess with Northwest Natural Gas, about opportunities and incentives. As you know, what we, you know, our first charge is to get through the land use process and get everything approved, so that we can build something. And with that is the, a, a very serious conversation about the expense and the infrastructure and all of that. So I anticipate that all of these ideas that are being brought forward will, many of them will be utilized in some way, but it may not all be at once. But if we're planning for that future use, then we may be able to get there. Again, we're also going to be working with nonprofits and for-profits coming in to help us develop this out. So the hope is to obviously have some of them carry the load as well. If we can bring in the infrastructure, we can plan around those kinds of things with the community, with the city, then what we can do is start to build on that over time. Rideshare programs and affordable housing, in my experience, have been one of the most successful relationships you can have. In the case of, of Oak Ridge Park in Lake Oswego, when we developed that out of Northwest Housing Alternatives, we were fortunate enough, in the way that the tea leaves fell with pricing for that particular development, we were able to buy a van. So that is something that we might be able to look at, is a, is a, is a community vehicle also that could be utilized, or repurposed. I think there's, there's sort of no end to the opportunities. What it actually looks like right now is not solid. So we'll want to continue to have these conversations on, on those priorities.
Right, and a lot of that stuff can come in, sort of, as you say, after the fact. Right. One of the things that you may or may not be aware of is that that, that piece of property is part of the smart grid test bed that PGE is rolling out. I keep being told.
It is?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
It is. I checked, because they had promised me all along it would be, and then I missed that meeting where they came in, and everyone was talking about Island Station. I was like, no, 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 it's not Island Station. It is, it's also your part of it. So the concept is that there will be, it'll isolate a.
Substation.
Substation, thank you. So that that substation will be more interactive. It'll be, if we're producing energy, if we're storing energy, it'll create opportunities for people who live there to opt into a process where when there's a peak load on the grid, they can say, yes, I opt in to have my thermostat go down two degrees or my water heater turn on, and I get money back for that. Or I have, opt in to allow my electric car to put energy back into the grid. So those are opportunities that exist, that not only could benefit the residents, obviously, but also benefit the whole, the wider area. And it's, it will be one of the first test grids of this nature in, in the nation, I'm told. So there's a big opportunity for us to work with PGE to really sort of maximize the possibilities there.
We're also housing the staff person who's working on that outreach for that program. So they are working out for a public expelling. If you'd like to connect with them, we're happy to connect with the, the two teams for you to talk about ways that the project may work in tandem.
That would be really.
Yeah.
Thanks, Anya.
Absolutely, thank you.
More of the climate stuff that is going to matter as construction occurs, beyond just the way, I mean, Walsh, Mike Stephan in particular, have really trotted this stuff through, not only from the standpoint of making it as expensive as possible, but also from the standpoint of making it very energy efficient. And literally the layout of the buildings, all of those things can contribute to that. Obviously, the, the envelopes of the buildings are not something you can change after the fact. Right, so as we're going along, my hope is that we're building a neighborhood that's appropriate to this coming century, that's as energy efficient, as close to net zero as possible. And then the things we can add on later with more money is solar, or battery storage, or whatever. But going in the buildings, building design, and then the envelopes, that's critical too.
Yeah, I really think that that level of energy efficiency we are, we are starting to see is, is a little bit more like the code minimum. You know, the energy efficiency work that Walsh has done, community, you know, cost-effective design and construction, Meyer Memorial Trust, Mike, some of us who also, who all worked on that, I think led, again, give me more plugs to NHA, but led to our desire of NHA to pursue net zero. And I think that those are the types, those learning lessons are what we can bring to this discussion. And all of that could be available like a menu, just like the, the design, the green charrette that we did for the park. It can really be a menu that we're sampling from as we're growing it over time.
I'd just like to mention one more thing. The, the county is looking at its landscaping policies to make sure that we're actually, we're trying not to spend much money doing this. But as you know, my particular interest has been in pollinators. So we're trying to actually implement policies and have lists of kinds of plantings that will also provide those microhabitats locally. So that's kind of a shift, because it hasn't been one of the lenses that we usually looked at, how we do our, how we do our landscaping, and how we, and how we do integrated pest management.
I'm trying to remember if it's on this list or not, but that was talked about during the charrette, was not only pollinators, but the concept of a food forest. And having a lot of the plantings that otherwise would be some arbovita or something, you know, be a blueberry lotion stat, so that the residents have the opportunity.
Yeah, that's on here in the target list.
And, and we, we have a city goal for our tree canopy, aiming to be at forty percent tree canopy. So that'll be a big part of this too, to add as many trees, and thoughtfully, you know, doing it. I think it could be apple trees, or it could be, you know, plum trees, so those folks have an opportunity for fruit. And we're getting the benefit for the, for the trees as well. I think there's a lot of really, this to me is one of the most exciting things, if not the most exciting thing, that's opportunity that's come up since I've been involved with the city, to really sort of create the version of a neighborhood that is perfect. You know, is really thinking about all the things and really incorporating, making it walkable, making it a twenty-minute neighborhood, making it very environmentally sensitive, making it someplace that's just awesome to live, that like any one of us would want to live. And yet have wraparound services, have all of the things, so that, so that our neighbors that currently live right here in the city, that can't afford the places they live in, have a place to live that they can afford, and are also amazing. And I think, you know, you guys have an amazing team that has done this before. I mean, I think Northwest Housing is, is a great example of how it's easy to, not easy, possible to get all the things right and still not spend the fortune doing it.
I just, I just wanted to add one thing. I think that we've learned from what I did with, with their public housing program. I mean, look at the way that they've built public housing across the country historically. People were isolated, segregated. Who wouldn't know that the low-income people live in these communities? And that is what we've learned that we don't want. We want to make, I mean, Stephen's plan, the, the park is broken up into lots, and the housing will give us the opportunity to put out notices, you know, a funding opportunity for developers to bring us their ideas. And those, those NOFOs can have priorities that you're talking about to them. People will compete to develop beautiful housing that is an actual community, not a place where, you know, high-poverty folks can be easily identified and segregated. That is not what we want. And most likely, you're going to have, the folks that live there now are, you know, really high-needs people. But you're also going to have people that earn, that own their own home but live there, that earn up to eighty percent of area median income. You're going to have people that are working, living next door to, you know, somebody who's a very low-income single mom struggling. And it'll just be a healthy place to live. And that is not what had created historically around.
Right.
So it's such a huge opportunity. I just hope that, you know, when we think of public housing, that that is not what this is going to be. And the reason that we're moving this direction is because the federal government has pulled out and given us an opportunity to fix what, you know, what they created a long time ago.
I mean, I guess, I just, I mean, I agree, it's a great opportunity for Milwaukee to, you know, re-envision a whole neighborhood. I just wanted to, you know, sort of reiterate something that Denny said, which is that, you know, no decisions have been made. I think this is really less. I think this is really less for the county staff, for the county people, 'cause they know that, but more for our citizens and for our planning commission. Because I think if somebody had been watching city council meetings for the last year and a half since this kickoff, where we've had sort of quarterly updates, and we've had actual drawings of different, you know, schematics, different concepts at different stages, they would think those decisions had been made and that those drawings had been blessed. And it's just, it's not true. I mean, those were informational, those were background, those were about the process. But we have never had a vote on anything, nothing's ever been structured for our vote, and we certainly couldn't have had a vote because we didn't have the application, right? Or we didn't have all the background documents, the traffic studies and all of those things. So, I just think it's important to, I put myself, I was a longtime planning commissioner, and I sort of put myself in their shoes. And I think about seeing all these meetings and, oh, has planning, has the city council already said it will be this many units, or it will be this or that? And I just wanna sort of reiterate what Denny said, which is, none of that's decided and it's all to come when you submit your application.
Are there questions, comments, thoughts? Alright. Well, do you have any closing comments you'd like to make?
Well, actually, this project's been a dream of mine for a long time, too. You know, back in the early two thousands, there was interest. So, I, and I like your ideas. I like the idea that this could be a project that the nation could look to that would open up lots of opportunity for housing across all economic levels. And also, designs and concepts that are innovative provide a unique opportunity for partners to do something that they can be proud of and long-lasting. And, you know, thankfully, the bond passed. We would never have this opportunity if it hadn't. And so, I appreciate the Portland voters and the Glackamas County voters who supported it. And there's lots of transportation opportunities that, in Milwaukee, that are accessible. And, you know, it's just, it's exciting. It, Thirty Second and those lousy speed bumps, maybe somebody will take those out. I said, the next speed bump they build in Milwaukee, I'm gonna lay in front of it.
I don't think we've built any in a long time.
Yeah, that was when I was mayor. It was quite a challenge. But anyway, so, and Thirty Second needs some work.
Yeah.
And this will be an opportunity with our vehicle registration fee that you guys are receiving and all the other great things you're doing, that could make Thirty Second a much better road than it is now. So, I thank, thank you very much for the opportunity to sit down with you. It's great to be home. I live in Cambie now, and it's not walkable. I don't live in the city, I live in the rural area. There's no sidewalks, so, thanks.
Sure. Well, and I wanna thank everybody for coming, too. I think very often, these kinds of processes get so siloized that, and then people wonder why, why conversations weren't had. And it's, there's sort of an artificiality because of all the rules we're constrained by in land use decisions and things like that, that don't lend themselves to community processes very well. But, you know, you guys have a great team. I think, I don't know if Rich remembers, but this was like the very first meeting I took as a mayor, was to reach out to Rich and say, "Let's get, let's get this going." Because we had, you know, during my time on council, we had heard testimony about people that were losing their homes, the low ladies that were, as far as we know, gonna be homeless. Because there was just literally no place for them to go. And this, this gives us an opportunity that's, doesn't come a lot very often, and we have the perfect storm of having the bond manager to help fund it. So, I'm very excited and I look forward to this, and I look forward to seeing the, your application. With that, I guess we are adjourned.